Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, welcome to all our visitors and guests. It's nice to see everyone here tonight. First thing we have on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March 28th regular session. Did everyone have a chance to look through those? Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public regarding our minutes? I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
A second.
Thank you, Kyle and Jenny. All in favor of approving the minutes? Raise your hand. And the motion passes six to zero. Next thing on our agenda is the finance or the funds report. Here's Todd. How many pages this week, Todd?
On the funds report, just three. I can't answer to the other. For the education fund, in March, we had receipts of $1,024,168.13. Expenses of $843,748.28. And we were able to make our first transfer of the year of $150,000. Our balance at the end of March in the education fund was $1,211,732. Debt service fund, we have receipts of $5,891.39. Our cash balance at the end of March in the debt service fund was $997,025.93. And the operations fund, we had receipts of $18,057, a transfer of $150,000. And we had expenses in the operations fund of $247,956.1. The cash balance at the end of March in the operations fund was $991,456.60.
Just a quick question on debt service. I just saw that it seems unusual to me that the January or the, let's see, February and March would be the same. Is that just a regular payment?
Yeah, we get certified local tax disbursement from Fulton County every month.
Okay.
And that gets, part of that, what part of that is, so it's consistent every month.
Okay, well, that's good. I mean, usually there's something added to it, so it's unusual for it.
Yeah.
And the next portion of that is the approval of claims. And does anybody have any questions on this?
I had a question about the lights we had to replace at Riddle. When we put the LED lights in, that was with the understanding, you know, LED should last longer. Those lights are not that old. Was there any warranty or why did we have such a really failure on them?
That was in the gym. I didn't think that we, I didn't think that everything got replaced. And I thought of those lights that we replaced there were not LEDs. And I don't know who we put them in the gym and where they were replaced.
Yeah, I thought they were. You don't think they were?
I don't think what we replaced was.
It was like five, six years ago.
That was before I got here, but I don't know. I don't, I was thinking that was the last time we talked to Terry in Thornsbury, we had that discussion about LED to the district, and there was still some areas that needed, that weren't up to date, and I was thinking that was part of it.
So this time it was switched LED?
I'm, yeah.
I would imagine it should, anyway.
I would think that at this point in time, everything we tried to do, that's what we're.
So will there be some kind of warranty on them then, you know of?
I, I would think there has to be something.
All right. $11,300 come up, and I'm just curious.
If it was the same time as Columbia's lights were replaced, ours had to be replaced too. And Brad said that he contacted the manufacturers of those lights that we had put in. They didn't last very long. And I think we're not under warranty.
And I'm not sure that they made those same anymore either, now that you say that.
Yeah. And I mean, I just remember from Columbia's side of it, because ours started going bad and flickering and all that, and then they had to be replaced. And the cost to replace the ballasts was going to be far more than just replacing the lights. And I asked about the warranty too, because to me, it seemed like it was fairly risky as well. And he said that the warranty was not, there wasn't a warranty for replacement. I heard both that's the same as what Riddle had. If it was the same timeframe, then they would be kind of under the same bill.
Sounds like the same problem with the flickering.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any other ques, any questions from the community? Thank you, Jason, for your input on that. Okay, we'll move on with the third item on our consent agenda. And that would be approval of payroll for 8th, April 8th, 2022 totaling $360, or $86,206.37. Any questions or concerns from the board? Any questions or concerns from the community? All right, and that completes that consent agenda, so we'll, I think, let me check. Got my papers upside down. All right. So we can go ahead and entertain a motion for that?
Move that we approve the financial report.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? And again, that motion passes six to zero. Item D is our student and stakeholder focus, and that I see here is, we have another list of donated items. So the following donations were made to our district in the last month. Columbia Elementary School, $300 for art supplies from Scioto Zai. Riddle Elementary, $1,000 for One School, One Book from Northern Indiana Community Foundation. Riddle Elementary, $400 for One School, One Book from Parkman's Optimist Group. Rochester Middle School, $835.44 for student activities from the PTO. Rochester Middle School, $600 for National Junior Honor Society from Misty Kreip. Rochester Middle School, $500 for student activities from the Optimist Club. Rochester Middle School, $35 library donation from Patrick and Linda Brennan. I'm sorry, High School, thank you. Rochester High School, $100 for prom from Brody Moore family. And Rochester High School, $100 for prom from Heather Bradley. And again, we really appreciate the community's support of all the activities, and all of our schools were covered, you know, in this, this donation. And we just can't thank folks enough for their kindness and their donations to our school. Any questions or comments about the donations? Anyone in the community have a question or comment? I'll, I have a motion, I'll take a motion to approve the donations.
Submove.
Thank you, Joe and Tom, thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six to zero. We have two items then on the consent agenda for action items. Number one is the approval of a field trip for the Rochester Engineering Class to World EV Kart Racing Race with Joel Lao. I don't think that's the name of the event, with Joel Lao, but it's the EV World Kart Racing Event. And I believe that's, that's in state, I think.
Westlake.
Westlake, yeah, that's where everything, yeah. So that's pretty exciting to have our kids going to the world event. And he had a pretty good write-up in his application for the field trip. So any questions from the board on that?
I just think it's cool.
It is cool, I wish I could go.
It's cool.
Any questions from the community on that? One of, one of the things that, that I always, I mean, our athletic teams get, get a lot of press, but we have so many things going on in schools that are outside of athletics. I really like to see these events and the things the kids are involved in and, and how well those go too, because their kids, those kids give every bit as much to their activity as other kids do to athletics. So, and some of them are athletes and engineers, so that's a cool thing. The next one is permission to scrap and destroy items as needed. We have coolers and ovens.
So ju, just seeking permission from the board, we had the first voltage surge go through, and then last Thursday experienced a second voltage surge within the district. With that, we find items that need to be discarded. For example, we've had some coolers that need to be discarded. We have ovens that we've had to replace from the voltage surge. And so requesting that we be able to either scrap those or discard of them once we know, so that we don't have them sitting waiting on the next board meeting. Those ovens would be very difficult to move more than one time and have them in storage when really what we need to do is scrap them and get them out of the district and then new replace. We continue to find items, even today, there were some things popping up that we know are going to be troublesome for us. So we experienced the second voltage surge on Thursday, and more damage was done.
Okay.
Yeah, have we, did you get permission from the insurance company to prevent spoilage of evidence for any subrogation claim that we would have going back towards Duke Energy and their third party?
I mean, they, the last, they said, just take all of the pictures, make sure you track all of the information, keep the numbers, the codes and everything, but we'll double check, but that's our understanding.
Thanks, Kyle, for that input. Anybody else on the board have questions about scrapping? Any comments from the community? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We need to do those individually, so one for the field trip and then one for the.
It does say action consent information on both of those. So I assumed we could do, since it's both action A. Am I mistaken here?
The consent agenda is usually just the minutes, but those are two different action items, but that's, I don't know if the word may.
Normally, I don't separate.
Okay, we'll go ahead then. I'll entertain a motion for the field trip.
Submove. Second.
Thank you, Casey and Tom. And all those in favor? Motion passes six to zero. And the second one would be permission to scrap or destroy items as needed, coolers and ovens in this particular instance. Motion, please.
Submove. Second.
Okay, Joe and Kyle, all those in favor? Motion passes six to zero. Move on to the personnel report. It's a lengthy one. I was grateful to see that 18 of the 20 pages were recommendations. I didn't want to have to read 20 pages of, or letters of recommendation. Recommendations: Jordan Noost, Columbia Special Ed, Special Needs Instructional Assistant at hourly rate of $1,259. Holly Heimhold, Columbia Special Needs Instructional Assistant at an hourly rate of $1,259. Victoria Jones, High School Night Custodian at an hourly rate of $12. John Walkman, Title IX Coordinator, a stipend of $1,300 per year. Mary Loving, Food Services Assistant, hourly rate of $1,529. Melanie Blackford, Temporary Food Service Manager, hourly rate $1,483. Maternity Lead Coverage: Natalie Hart, RMS Agriculture Class for Obermeyer, hourly wage, subpay for 60 credit hours at $80 a day. Dylan Weaver, RHS, Mrs. Friends Class, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, hourly wage $140 a day. Mariah Yocum, RHS, Mrs. Friends Class, Monday and Wednesday, hourly wage $140 a day. Becky Schmal, RHS, Mrs. Hernandez, hourly wage $140 a day. Enrichment Trip Stipend: Hannah Clemens, Columbia Elementary, a stipend of $75. Michelle Jaeger, Columbia Elementary, $75. Athletic Recommendations: Joel Burris, Girls' Varsity Basketball Coach, salary $7,180. Nate Basham, Head Coach, RMS Track, salary $1,143. Isaac Shaffer, Assistant Coach, RMS Track, salary $950. Sarah Wilson, Assistant Coach, RMS Track, salary $950. Brian McCants, Assistant Coach, RMS Track, salary $950. Jason Kaiser, Volunteer Coach, RMS Track. FMLA: Martha Pittman, from March 29th, 2022 until released from position. Joni McVeigh, from April 5th, 2022 to the end of the school year. Resignations: Brad Carter, Facilities Director, as of April 15th, 2022. Robert Reed, Maintenance Department, as of April 15th, 2022. Athletic Resignations: Raymond L. Davis, Assistant Girls Basketball Coach. Did I miss anybody? Questions or concerns regarding the recommendations? Personnel report. Anyone in the community have anything to say? Yes, Kimberly?
I'm just curious, I haven't heard anything before. I saw a paper about the Title IX Coordinator. Has that individual been hired?
That individual is already on staff.
Okay.
And it's, it's like an ECA position or an add-on to that, but we are required by Title IX, by law, to have a male Title IX coordinator and a female Title IX coordinator. So do we have our female coordinator?
We do.
I can't remember what we did last time, so. So we have one of each, and that's just a formality of something we have to do by law.
Are they going to follow Title IX?
We, that is, that is our intent, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is the American Rescue Plan money tied to it? Like we discussed before, we had a discussion before about the bathrooms, and I'm just curious, you know, where are the waves going here? It's okay though, Title IX is being upheld at Rochester?
Absolutely, it's correct.
Thank you.
I believe that if you're talking about the locker rooms, that's actually part of the bond.
Yeah, I know, there was a question, and I had discussed it before because of just issues. You know, my granddaughter likes to swim, and she hears on school buses and stuff with her kids, and she's afraid going to the locker room in some places because she's afraid of all these issues, and she's only nine.
We.
So I just was curious about Title IX.
We, you know, we are, we are following the laws according to Title IX and according to the American Civil Liberties Act, and those are inclusive. And as a public school, I mean, that's our obligation to follow the laws. But we are also in the process, or will be soon, of redoing the swim locker rooms and making, you know, one bathroom that's, that's non-gender specific, or it's, you know, men, women, and, you know, I mean, I, I have no problem with that, I've never had a problem with that. Well, admittedly, there have been times when you go to the local whatever, you know, when you're on a road trip and the ladies' room is locked, and out of sheer desperation, I just go in the other one because it's open, and, you know, if anybody asks me, you know, well, never mind, I'm not going to go into that. But anyway, you know, we all use the same one at home, and I don't see a big deal with it, we just don't all go in there together. So that's what we're doing, is we're creating restrooms so that individuals have the choice of what restroom they use. And it's also separate. We have, also, we'll have separate stalls for people to change clothing in if that's what they prefer. So for swimming, et cetera.
Okay.
So making all those things available.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Can we have a motion on the personnel report?
Submove.
Thank you.
Yep. Second.
Thank you, Casey. All in favor of approving the personnel report? That motion passes six to zero. You have business to talk about?
Well, if I may, Mr. Rainey, if you'd like to introduce Mr. Burris and, and share some information, and then Mr. Burris, if you'd like to make a few comments, that'd be great, so.
I'd like to introduce the new head Girls' Varsity Coach for basketball, for the program for all of Rochester Community Schools. This is Coach Joel Burris and his wife, Ashley. He's been the last five years at Trinity, Green Lawn, up in South Bend, private school. This was the first, for five years, this is the first year they've been allowed to play in the sectional as an affiliate school, but in the meantime, keeping his competitive schedule as, as he brought it up. So he brought a boys' program from scratch, basically. He's coached the various places. He's been a coach, his dad's a longtime coach in the conference. And he's a Rochester resident, has the All-Star Driving School. Did I say that right?
Roadstar.
Roadstar.
It's All-Star.
Creates All-Star.
He creates All-Star drivers, is what he has. He has the All-Star. So he's familiar with a lot of the, a lot of the kids in, in the community. And it's nice to have him, have him aboard. He's very, very excited. The interview was a little bit like a halftime speech. Am I wrong, Tom? So we're, we're excited to have him, and he's been blowing my phone up for a couple days. Sometimes I don't respond, or I do with, wait till Tuesday. Wait till Tuesday. But he keeps sending me, thanks. So he's ready to go, he's ready to go, so we'll talk after that. But this is Coach Joel Burris.
I'm, I'm excited to be here. Obviously, the past five years, when I took over at Trinity, they were 0-2-1. Just had applied for the IHSA. There were times where I was wondering, you know, what I was doing there, but it was a place where I created a lot of relationships with the kids and the families. It was really hard, really hard to leave there. You know, because when you create those relationships with kids, it's hard to look them in the eye and tell them you're leaving. But this was an opportunity for our family, with living here, my business being here, my kids growing up, Jackson's, and our oldest is an all-day pre-K at Columbia. This, this made sense for me. And I've gotten to know a lot of these girls with having my business and, and having them in driver's ed, and getting to talk to them, and seeing what kind of athletic mindset they have, and wanting to build on that. And seeing that with young girls at a younger level. You know, at Trinity, being a private school, we had kids coming in, in seventh grade. So it was a lot of making up. You had to make up for a lot of things because we didn't have that feeder system. This is going to be a place where I can create that feeder system here with the younger girls and see that process through into the high school level. And I think, you know, a lot of people would agree that are in education today and in coaching, you know, these kids, we're trying to make them into the best possible people that they can be by the time they leave these doors. Whether that's going to play college basketball, whether that's going to a trade school, a four-year college, whatever that may be, I think the goal is to build these people into the best people that they can be going into the next stage of life. That's something that I take a lot of pride in, and we're going to use basketball to do that here. So I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
No, that's all right. Before my closing comments, we'll just go through the schools, but something that's happened since our last board meeting that you're excited about and would like to share, things that you're working on. I know this is a busy time of the year, and then what we can do collectively to better support the meeting forward in this next month. Oscar, could you go first?
Yeah, so over the weekend, we had our musical Frozen Junior, and then today, we brought Riddle and Columbia over, and they got to experience that, which was really cool. So when they started singing, you know, the popular song from Frozen, I'm not going to sing it for you, but all the kids joined in, that was kind of, our kids really enjoyed that. They said the adults over the weekend didn't sing so much to them, so they really appreciated that today.
Would that be let it go?
Yes, yeah.
You sure you can't hold a few bars?
Probably can, but I'd probably embarrass myself. We had National Honor Society inductions, which is a big deal for us. And then we had some pretty cool Fedco pitch presentations through Mr. Lao's class where we brought in Castan Valley, and there was a competition there to see who won some dollars, I believe. And something huge has happened, as our caps and gowns have arrived, our yard signs are out and about in the senior parents' yard, right, boss?
I don't know.
What we have coming up is we, Mrs. Atkinson has come to me with a great idea, call it with a recruitment fair, so we have 33 local businesses coming in that are looking for our seniors who are graduating, ready to go into the employment field, and for our juniors and seniors who just need some part-time summer work. So they're coming in for both angles there. So we're excited to have those 33 businesses joining us. And then we have prom coming up. We have over 200 kids registered to attend prom a week from Saturday. So we'll have Chief Butler and Officer Heisman and Skeeter, Judge Heller, and Robert Thompson in to do their presentation as far as the prom season act thing, because it's not live this year. So we have that going on. Our eighth graders are going to the reality fair coming up, and the Manitols get a special opportunity to sing the national anthem at the South Bend Cubs game here within the next month. That's a pretty lengthy process to get selected, so that's what we have going on. What we need from you is, I know several of you came and toured the high school or didn't tour, but we sat there and I had kids talk to you for quite a bit during the day, share that knowledge. Like I said, when I was at RMS, I didn't know exactly what all we offered at the high school, so if you get a chance, please be our walking billboards, as I think hope so eloquently put to me today. If you guys can be our walking billboards about what we have going on in the building that some people in our community who maybe lived there their whole lives don't know what's going on, we'd appreciate that. So I guess that's what we got.
Very impressive, didn't you think? The high school kids' presentation?
You were at work, never mind.
We did a wonderful job, and, and I know Janet mentioned later, it was even just the tip of the iceberg, there were even other programs, but we only had so much time. The kids, they sell the experience so well, and they did a wonderful job about talking about what lights them up about going to school, and such a variety. And you all and every, you know, grade level that came before you do that and make that available for our kids and have a heart for our kids in here. That was, that was encouraging to see.
Absolutely. Mr. Snyder?
I'm going to report for Riddle and Columbia tonight, so I'm not going to separate them all, because a lot of what we both kind of got going on or reporting about was kind of, kind of the same. The first thing I'll mention is something that's really exciting that's happened in both of our buildings was today, what Oscar had mentioned, we were able to go and take, Riddle spent, got the whole school to go, pre-K opted out at our building, but first and second grade went, and we watched the Frozen show, and it was just fantastic for our students. Our kids, when they went in, it was a lot of them the first time ever in the auditorium, so just that experience of walking into the auditorium was very eye-opening for them. It was a great performance. The students at the high school did a fantastic job. And then, you know, you had mentioned the singing. I'm going to send the video to all of RCSC as soon as I get time to get it uploaded, so you can hear what he's talking about, because it brought tears to some of us that were in attendance, just to, to just see like the magic going on with that activity. So on behalf of Riddle and Columbia, I want to thank the high school and their staff, tri-ep, the administrators over there, and the ladies that, that work with the tri-ep were putting that on for us, because it was truly a special event for our kids. A lot of our kids don't get that opportunity to go to those on the weekends, and it was just a fantastic thing for both schools, so we appreciate that. Riddle also wrapped up NWEA last week, and they're going to be taking I-Learn practice tests tomorrow. Each grade level also has a planned field trip for May, so they're excited to be able to do those again, and kind of piggybacking on that for us. We have got, obviously, the trip today. On Friday, we're taking first and sec, or first and kindergarten to Logan Sport, to the Ivy Tech for the promise walk into my. the Ivy Tech for the promis, Walk Into My Future trip, which I kind of mentioned to you guys a little bit last week, but basically Ivy Tech has six different stations set up with different fields like medical or nursing, engineering, law enforcement, things like that. And the kids get to go around to the different stations in Ivy, at Ivy Tech. And they have professionals working there to show the kids at a first and second grade level, or a first and kindergarten level, what that looks like, what college is, what additional education is and some of the opportunities that they have. So, it's a, a good opportunity to get our young kids starting to, to look and think about their future and start, you know, kind of planning and getting ideas of what that looks like. So, we haven't done that for a while and...
Did you say that was Thursday?
Friday.
Friday.
And the last thing, like what do we need from, from you guys? And this goes for both of our schools. We would just like to invite you all to any of our events that we have coming up. For Riddle, they have a third grade water party and fourth grade color run. I've got this, the field trip going on Friday. You guys are welcome to attend that, meet us there. We've also got some field trips coming up to the zoo, Fair Oaks, things like that. And if you're interested in any of that, I'd be happy to get you the details on that. But we don't need your help, but you are invited and you're more than welcome to come and experience that with the kids. And not having field trips for the last couple of years, this has been really exciting to plan, to get back into that mode and just to see the kids loading up on the buses today, even for a short trip across town, was just a really good feeling to get out of the building and go and, you know, it was, it was nice. So, that's kind of where we're at unless anybody's got any questions.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Some neat things have gone on since the last board meeting. We had our NJHS call-out. We have, this year, we're inviting sixth graders and seventh graders. Next year will be our transition year and we'll have both of those grades in NJHS. And then from that point on, it'll just be seventh grade due to the transition. So, we have almost a hundred, a hundred kids eligible right now. That means they are eligible through grades and good behavior so that they move on to the application process. And it is a lengthy application and they have to get some service hours to be even considered. So, it was very encouraging and, and fun to see that many kids eligible. We also had cheer tryouts and we have thirty-two RMS cheerleaders for next year. So, it's nice to see that program growing, Mr. Oz. The other thing that happened was I made the first contact with fourth grade parents to let them know of the upcoming, upcoming fifth grade orientation. Had several kind people reach out and thank me and had kind words of encouragement that they're excited to come to the middle school. So, that's nice. What I'm doing right now is a whole bunch of stuff like everybody else is. We are doing I-Learn tomorrow and Thursday and Friday this week, so that's big for this week. Looking at scheduling still, our end of the year awards, fifth grade orientation like I spoke about, wrapping up those McCrell meetings and working on the details for the end of the year dances coming up. So, lots of fun things for the end of the year. If I don't need anything from you guys, just continued support. I appreciate it.
Before we close, if I may, I, we always...
Go ahead. I know, look at Kissler stare at me like I told you to be short. Something I want to thank you guys for and Mrs. Vance for is the two curriculum directors that we're working with on Wednesdays. It's really sparked some good conversations with myself and some of my teachers. As I've said many a times in here, I'm in a growth year for sure, learning the new processes over at the high school and having those powerful conversations with teachers with those two ladies' assistance has been real helpful. So, I wanted to thank you for that.
Yeah, and I'll second that because I met with one of my, one of the curriculum directors today and we had a good, long conversation about the processes that they're working on and the conversations that we've had as a staff as well. So, I'll echo exactly what you said. I just wanted to mention too, pre-K is, we're bringing the zoo in like we did for our enrichment. So, we've got the Potawatomi Zoo coming in here shortly to meet with our pre-K kiddos and they're going to bring some animals. So, that'll be exciting. They requested a sensory one, which involves, I believe, snakes. So, it's going to be very exciting. Not just snakes, but, but they wanted to make sure that the kids, the kids love snakes. So, they wanted to make sure that they, they're having snakes. And, oh, one other thing that I didn't mention, but I'll just briefly touch on. We did just complete our roundup, kindergarten roundup, and that was a very successful, until the power went out, it was very successful. But we had a lot, a really good turnout and it's really cool when half of your roundup is taking place back in your building because your preschool is filled up completely and ha- and you got to round up all of those kids instead of their parents having to bring them in. So, that, that's a neat experience to have, have that as well. And just for your guys' knowledge, our pre-K is completely booked for next year. We have twelve people on the list for next year. We have a list started for the year after that already with, I believe, ten, ten to twelve people the year after. And then we all have another list started out. So, you know, they're making a tremendous impact and, and I appreciate those ladies and, and your guys' support in bringing that because I definitely think that it's been good for our community and, and for our schools. So, sorry about, I forgot, I forgot to mention that. Luke's got me all messed up with his, his notes. Derailed my, my thoughts. So, no, I'm, I got to blame Luke for something at every meeting.
Your bodyguards are doing a good job. And I appreciate the passion and vice they're being...
I will very quickly echo what they said about the curriculum directors. They've been in my building, they've been emailing my teachers, they've been helping in every way, working not only on Wednesdays but after hours on their other days. And I appreciate it so much because it's something that we've done before, but not in this way. So, I feel like they're leading us down the right path and it's very much appreciated.
Thing that really excites me about that is it's K-12 and everybody's on the same, talking about the same things at a different level.
It's consistent.
And that, that is just amazing. That's just going to go great down, so I'm very excited about that.
Jason, how many pre-K classes?
Three, three all-day and then developmental preschool for half-day, two half-day, or two half-day classes.
I thought there was four, but I didn't want to misspeak. Okay. And you're maintaining that next year?
Yes, ma'am.
Same numbers?
I just, I would just like to share what the, what the principals have spoken about and one thing that I want to make sure that we don't overlook is transportation as, as we are moving kids from the buildings to the high school to make sure that they can see the play. As we are working to get several, couple of hundred students down to Logan Sport on Friday, that's a lot of effort on transportation's part. And Kim Long and Kevin Ryan have done a wonderful job of continuing to coordinate that. We continue to be short on drivers and we need good drivers in the district and somehow they continue to make available all of these opportunities for the students. So, I want to thank them. I want to thank Scott and Todd especially for coming in after the power surge and, and helping get everything back on track. I know Scott spent a great deal of time on Friday getting things back online and ready to go for today and to the team and to the board for a few days of vacation with mom and, and you guys heckling me from the sidelines. Thank you for your work here, but also for allowing that opportunity. So, thank you.
So, what, the surge this time, it was, do we have a determination? Was that us? Was that them? Is it still undecided?
I don't think it was. Definitely wasn't us because it affected, it was a much wider effect through town. I mean, there were stoplights that were out.
Right.
Various other...
So, we're still on the digging phase on that one, then?
Yeah.
And we've stepped back and I think Kyle can share that, yeah, our insurance has attorneys that are working on that.
Okay.
To resolve those issues.
Okay.
But, but there is a lot of work and I appreciate Scott and Todd and the extra work they're doing. But principals who were able to rally and think quickly on Thursday and make sure the kids were moved and moved safely and transportation, getting the kids home, that was an interruption to how we typically do dismissal. But also the hiccups, some, Cassie will email and say our ovens just went out or somebody will, Kathy Wilkinson will say the coolers just went out. And we continue to have those things and everybody's been so patient and the communication process and trying to right the ship is still a lot of work going on behind the scenes, but we've got great people here working through that. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Anything else? So, at this time then, I'll, we need a motion adjourned?
I'll look.
Second.
All in favor? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.